Yeah, I didn't know that whole bridge drawing was helping or not.
Probably not, because it's been redesigned. I didn't print them out, so it's just something that you guys will have to look at. I mean, I would assume that no one's gonna go in there and try to make changes to it, because that's what they do.
I don't understand half of it anyway.
How is that?
I'm kidding, I haven't looked at it.
Oh, I was gonna say, you worked for the state for how long?
Having trouble downloading more?
I'll leave the order.
You got a crystal permit to sign?
It's just a before? That's just a background.
It's just background. We've got the DRA ratio study that needs to be signed. You signed in the wrong place.
Well, this is one really good.
You signed with the applicant.
Oh, shit. You got a motion to sign this?
Yep.
I make a motion to sign this.
All six, sir.
On the paper?
Aye. Did the aye sign?
Yes.
Um, we received a permit request to use town property from Casella. They want to use the building the morning of March 8th for an informational meeting. That is the weekend before election and town meeting. Depending on snow, no one at it will have the guys set up.
And then not only snow, but if they track in snow and dirt, it's cleaning it too. It seems like we shouldn't... I think that goes to town meeting day.
And I let her know that I would let her know the availability, the... Snowmobile club will be here that afternoon already. But usually they need it here, they can, unless they're doing food and they need out there.
And that's a small group, right?
Yeah, she's saying a hundred and fifty people.
What's the purpose of the meeting?
It just says informational.
It's March 8th, they want that, yeah.
Yeah, I think we should have it push it off until after town meeting, because... You know, we've got to make sure we've got the building set up for town meetings.
I'm sure, because the meeting ain't till the following weekend anyway, so...
It's a Tuesday. It's Tuesday.
March 8th?
March 8th, and the town meeting is March 3rd. I mean, July is March 11th. I can ask for a first another day that they can do it, but... And then, I don't know how much we would charge. We don't charge residents, but we do have it in there that there would be a charge for businesses.
You wouldn't you have asked if there's another day?
Yeah.
I'm sorry, did you get it?
Have Jeanette ask, Casella, if there's another day.
Yeah, and so just like, maybe the following weekend?
Yeah, if there's, um, if there's anything that's set that follows Saturday. And then what would the charge be? So I can let her know that as well.
How long does it take to register?
Nine to noon, she asks.
Yeah, a hundred and fifty people?
Yes.
We have a deposit, a hundred dollars, right?
Yes, we do a hundred dollar deposit. And then we have inherent that town property used for business purposes are subject to fees ranging from one hundred to five hundred dollars with no reimbursement. That's in the current policy.
So what's reasonable? For half the day unless it's a hundred and fifty people? That's a big... If they were going to another facility...
We didn't charge, uh... Job corps, it'd be, yeah.
That's the government, that's Army Corps.
Army Corps, yeah.
Yeah, that's the government. That's a little different. They're not a business. I'm just saying, it does say on here that we would charge businesses.
How much time would it take for somebody to clean it up if, after they had a meeting? Take that into consideration.
Depends on how dirty it is. I mean, if I come in here and I clean this whole building, it's from top to bottom, it's four to six hours.
Well, they're not using the whole building. But four to six hours, okay.
If you're talking sweeping, mopping, hallway, gymnasium, kitchen, bathrooms?
Just using the atrium, correct? That's what they want?
Gym.
The gym.
Well, you got the gym, the hallway, the bathrooms, yeah. And access is through the kitchen.
You know, a hundred fifty, two hundred bucks to clean up, really.
At least probably, I mean, if they were going to, felt some renting space, it'd be a lot more than that. Two fifty? Two fifty?
I said, four.
Four, three, four hundred?
Yeah.
Okay. Well, I don't know, see if she has a different date of mine.
How much you even live with? Four. If you're paying your cleanup.
Yeah, and there's just, on, on March 8th, there's no way of being able to be sure we can clean up and set up for, you know, I think it really is free.
Probably not.
If there's snow or crews out following.
Okay. Eighteen minutes from January twenty seventh? I make a motion to prove the minutes from January twenty seventh?
I'll second that. Didn't you say you didn't go through them yet? Yeah, I didn't get, I totally believe I got through that one. I don't match up if I did, but...
That was just the one thing session. Probably read over it quickly if you want.
I'd like to wait, wait till next. You guys do whatever you do, I think if you feel good about it, it's up to you.
I reviewed them.
I did too. I'm fine with it. On the paper?
Aye.
I'm gonna abstain on it. I abstained.
Five minutes from February third.
Did you get my email?
I did, but we need to go over it in the meeting, I, you can't do it via email.
Okay.
Yeah, to, to, to send out this email, all of us, is like, um, having a meeting outside of public session. It's a violation of...
If I tip it up and I send it to everyone?
Yep, you could send out the draft, but then to respond to the draft, to edit it, the editing has to be done in public.
Well, I can send out the draft to everyone, you can respond to me, but you can't respond and include them.
Sorry, to know that.
That's in the right to know, uh, training. And the, um, knowing your territory, I know in, in HDMAC goes over it.
Yeah, you can always respond to me, but not everyone.
So on, second page, second paragraph. What happened last year and what's happening now, he's voting no for the raises. You want to insert July's disaster and school and property taxes, but you didn't say that at the meeting. I mean, and I'm gonna say that's clarification, but...
That's what, that's what we're talking about, though, and this right there is an open end question. So people are gonna look, whoa, what happened?
But you should have said it in the meeting.
No, the things, no, you know, we're, we're talking about that part of it, and I'm not... I know I didn't, I didn't come out and say disaster, but if we were talking about disaster, we were talking about the taxes. And that's what, that's no big deal. Just letting the people know what we were talking about. You wanna see what I... Need to know what you thought now. How is this?
So the second one is kind of the same thing, because it wasn't that clarification in the meeting.
Yeah, it was, the exact words, because I got, I, I copied it off my phone.
Can I see the meeting minutes there? The one I printed, because I don't have it in front of me, so I don't...
So on the third one, you would just insert it in this paragraph? Is that what you're saying?
I can't hear you what you're saying.
So this third one, you would just insert it into the paragraph? Were you saying... Third, I asked what we would do it, I voted no, and you're saying...
Yeah, and I went into saying, this is what I said. You know, I'm not saying it, you know?
Okay, what, what page is that? The town, because I mean, these numbers are not put out.
Could we just attach this to the minutes?
How would you attach to show where they belong in the minutes or...
Well, because it says.
Where does this, where does this section belong?
I gotta frig, I can't get rid of my friggin' headache. Hey, I'm gonna go do something, I'm gonna put to that headache all the friggin' time. It's screwing with me. Yeah, that'd be, that'd be fine, as long as it's hooked to it where people can grab it.
Where's the, where's that going?
But I think if these comments are just attached to the minutes, because it's gonna be hard to insert them into the minutes, otherwise...
Make a motion for that, seven minutes, hold it up. Detachment, hold on. Second. Aye.
Aye. So Ekman Engineering sent over an email, I forwarded you guys the plans to look at. They're also looking at, um... Intent to grant an easement from both Christina Chamberlain and Nancy Smith. Nancy was here today and signed hers, but we still have the problem with trying to get in touch with Christina. They're saying that we could try through our attorney to get an easement granted, but we're still waiting on the procurement letter for the beans from six weeks ago, so I don't know if that's gonna do us any good. So I was gonna see if maybe one of you guys wanted to go to Christina's house and see if we can get a signature on this piece of paper.
We go together, you say to go together, probably, yeah.
I'll give you guys a copy of this event. We need it signed, because we need the easement, otherwise it's gonna be more money in order to...
Right.
Do the work.
If she's not there, if she's incarcerated, then...
There's activity in and out of there, right?
Isn't she on an ankle bracelet?
I was told that she is incarcerated. So, I don't know.
But there are people living there, so they should know where she is.
And, well, and I was told that her nephew goes there, and he's in and out of there sometimes, so... Somebody's gotta sign. And otherwise...
Just let me know what day you want to go on, we'll go.
Otherwise, we, oops, I mean, we take the chance of getting in trouble for doing what we have to do in order to rebuild. I don't know what the repercussions are to that.
And when do we need the easement signed?
Now.
Like immediately?
That's what needs to be signed.
I'm gonna go see her then. This is probably their work time, so... Base appeal. Get doctors for catheter tomorrow afternoon. So, um... Tomorrow's Tuesday. When's EBR, I did? What time? After four. All right, well, she just, uh, feature right here at four o'clock.
That's a good time, because I technically need three quarters of us meeting.
Oh, if they're going together, yeah. So four o'clock? And that is on the, nine o'clock.
What's, what's her name?
Christina Chamberlain.
Right there. What's on you, okay?
Are you hoping to get it... Approval on the drawings tonight, or next Monday?
It's gonna have to be next Monday. I mean, unless you guys are just gonna go, hey, we trust what they're doing, that's why we hired them, it's their job.
I mean, because if you could pull it up, we could look at it, how complicated are they, are they? I mean, I, mine's still not downloading, the internet's not sufficient for me.
I think it just depends on how comfortable you are looking at construction drawings. I mean, I flip through them and go, yeah, yeah, makes sense, yeah. But not everyone, I mean, there's not gonna be anything in there, I don't think, in my personal and past career professional opinion, that any of us are gonna go, no, that doesn't look right. I mean, do you, do you guys disagree? I mean, this is what we're paying them for, so...
I know, it just, conceptually...
I know.
I wanna...
Yep.
Look at them, I'm just, I can try to pull them off of my phone, but I have to, the internet isn't secure.
And these are just, this is just the draft that's going to FEMA, so, I mean, that kinda also tells me that if FEMA approves it, there's not any reason why we shouldn't approve it, but...
And if we do it now, we can start now, as long as we get the easements.
As soon as we get the easements and as soon as FEMA approves the drawings.
But they can send it to FEMA.
The select board, the town, is still gonna have to sign the documents saying it's good to go to bid.
Right.
So there's still an approval, a formal approval process that has to happen.
I make a motion that we proceed to the, this preliminary approval of the drawings for some drawing.
On the paper?
And at least then they could submit them to FEMA.
Right, and, and just move it along a little quicker than waiting another week.
Yes. All right, the other thing was going through the town report, I still won't have a picture for Vic. Sean came in here last week, I asked him about it.
I just sent one, I think. Hopefully he'll need it.
Okay.
They'll need it, it's what I...
You sent it before the meeting, or after?
Uh, just before.
Okay, well, chances are Nina have seen it then.
Yeah.
Okay, I'll look. But, so I need the picture of Vic, and then there's documents in here, blank papers that say that there are placeholders for whatever's missing.
What's the deadline to get it to the printer?
Um, it's supposed to be the 17th, but we're not meeting on the 17th, so...
So, we really need to prove it tonight.
Yeah, and I don't have everything. I'm, I'm missing some things. Nancy Crosby has norovirus, so not going anywhere near her to get, do, or talk anything treasurer. I mean, the, there's not a whole lot that you guys would change. I can't do anything with the DRA stuff, because we didn't have a budget meeting on Thursday, so we'll have the budget meeting, and then I have to try and get DRA to approve stuff, so it can go on the book. I'm missing a couple reports. Missing a picture for Vic. There's some pictures
You have the pictures to apply to go with that.
The last four pages that I just handed you, and sorry, I didn't make copies for everyone, because it's just, I just figured you guys could flip through it. There's not, you don't have to really approve the content, so to speak.
So, we probably put the pictures up here with the dedication.
And we, well, we need to put picture, a picture on the front. Yeah. And then we will put pictures with the dedication, that's what we usually do. So, there's the pictures there, plus whatever picture I got for Vic.
She has a cake one by the dedication, probably, maybe, everybody. There's one that's a cake. That must be for all the volunteers and all the ladies. So, we could have
Your file, yeah.
We could have that one with the dedication. Or, or one of the road wash outs.
I mean, that product might be kinda cool to put a couple of the road wash outs on the, on the cover.
On the cover, that, yeah.
I mean, you've got some of her
That's amazing.
Which one is that, where it looks like a ridge?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And this one where it just dropped down.
Yeah, I remember standing there looking at those, it's like, oh my gosh, deep, deep, deep.
Oh, look at this one.
Yeah. Can they color those, like, put them on, and print them?
No, they won't be colored.
They won't?
It'd be quite a bit more expensive.
Is it?
Yeah. Yeah, 'cause we get like, we need like, six hundred, five hundred books made or something.
Yeah.
Yeah. So, the town board, that's just the usual format?
Yes, and, and I don't have that to offer, 'cause it's, we gotta put, I gotta finish putting the budget in, once we have the budget hearing, and then the warrants have to be reviewed and approved by DRA, and so it all goes together.
And are there any warrants that we can have legal review?
No.
Okay, and are you using that law?
I don't think so. I mean, I'll, I can, I'll send them, but there's not really anything. The only petition warrant was Zoom meetings and posting, uh, Zoom meetings, town recording and town posting of select board meetings. That was the only petition warrant.
And that just has to be done verbatim?
Correct.
And like BM636 would be when we get the budget here?
When everything, yep.
Well, so not having that is kinda putting a wrench in things.
I mean, I entered what we're proposing, but I can't submit it until the hearing happens.
Any, um, Nancy's timeline, where we should be feeling better, and?
I don't know.
I don't know how long norovirus usually lasts, I know it's pretty nasty.
I know, I don't know.
What, what kind of virus is?
Norovirus, stomach flu. It's a really bad stomach flu. That's the thing that cruise ships are known for having?
Yeah. Oh, that's, that's the evil one.
Somebody else I heard had that, I can't think who though.
Warren.
Warren Green joke?
All last week.
God, somebody else, I can't think who, it's one of those going around. So, I did redo that, shorten that paragraph on the annual report, so I sent that to you today.
And I thought it, that's the file that I put in there, but
I do have an extra copy here. You might find accident. Nope? That's a dedication, I have that on. Did it put that in here?
Yeah, is that the same, is it the same?
Nope.
Oh, yeah, put that in there.
I'll just go this one.
No, uh, put an X through the one that doesn't belong, yeah. Yeah, I'm sure.
Wrong working on the fire department report. He usually really brought them back.
That's, I'm like, I could swear he gave it to me, but I can't find it, so I think it was the budget that he gave me? He didn't email it to me, so I sent him a text, I'm like, I, I need this. I don't have it. I looked in emails, and I looked, and I don't have it.
I'll put this up, you saw. You left it last week.
Nope. He didn't, he said he has to finish it.
No, I know that, but I mean, I'm just saying a lot of other stuff.
That makes me feel better, that I didn't lose it.
I think we should have our things first, and then things like the kind of hit river joint commission after our departments and organizations.
I, yeah, I just, I put it, I was trying to follow the order of the book we did last year, but I could put it in whatever order you want. Does that make sense? For just after any board and?
We don't have the state police report yet?
No. I think everybody's just running behind this year. It's close. It's close. But, no cigar.
So, we have to have the budget meeting, even if it's bad weather on Thursday?
Well, they're saying that it's supposed to be Wednesday, Wednesday the snow. In two, Thursday morning, then it's supposed to stop.
Yeah, it's only, yeah, it's only one to three Thursday.
Did it change? 'Cause I thought it was supposed to start Thursday and go into Friday, though. It's changed. Well, regardless, we gotta have the, if one person shows up, we, we don't have a choice.
Saturday's the real storm.
Great.
Off by eight, Saturday night, and Sunday by eight.
Sweet.
Because Friday's the last day to have the meeting. There were notices we'd have to post it and all that, which we're not gonna make, right? Because we already
Well, we have the 13th posted as a second hearing, if necessary.
Right.
So, I've just reposted it.
But if we cancel it Thursday, we can't post it.
We, we can't cancel it Thursday, because Friday is the last day to have your first budget hearing.
Right. And we wouldn't have time to post it.
Yeah. It's not happening.
Should we have a short meeting after, just to approve the annual report with those? Do you think we're gonna get those missing pieces by then?
I don't know. It, it, those are things that are not in my control.
Yeah, well, I think, I mean, it has to go to the printer this week. I mean, you said the 17th is the latest, because it's the holiday, so basically by Friday it has to go to the printer.
That's what it's supposed to be then?
So, if you sent those out to our email, if you sent those, sent that out to our email, we can sit there and look through them, and then we can make a comment at that point, we can prove it, or whatever.
Or just meet Thursday after the budget hearing, is what she's saying?
Oh, yeah.
So, we can approve it. So, we can post a meeting, we have a short meeting, and I think, and by that point, we'll have the budget, and she could, we won't have the form, because she'll have to do that on the DRA website. We get our budget, and then print it out, but yeah, I think it's, it's closer, and if we don't have those pieces, we actually go without those pieces.
So, I'll post that there'll be a short working session after the budget hearing on the 13th.
She's got assignment right there, and print her name.
Is that what it says? Yep.
I'm just double checking.
Yeah.
So, a couple of, after the treasurer's report, if the answer's set.
No, everyone doesn't, everyone just comes in and does its job.
Yeah.
I mean, I can do the treasurer's report, but I'm not the treasurer. I mean, I have all the information. I usually work with the treasurer for them to do the report. So.
So, you could always help her with it, and she could approve it. Probably if she's up to doing it, remotely at home.
Yes. Worst case scenario is it gets printed outside the book, and you stuff it inside the books, I
That's essential, that's one of the required pieces. Yeah, treasurer's report is required. How about the audit report, I didn't see that in here.
Uh, that's just a two-page letter.
Okay.
Yeah, I have that.
Okay.
From twenty, from the 2023, it's on my desk, probably.
Okay, do you want me to put a note or anything to?
No, 'cause I'll, I'll remember. 'Cause I'll go through that ten times over before it goes in.
Okay. Expenditures from contingency fund. So, that would be the fund balance.
No, that wouldn't be fund balance, that would be the, that's the MS 10, it's in there. Expenditures from the contingents, the, from contingency or capital reserve, I'm sorry.
Contingency fund, R S A 31, hold on ninety-eight.
I'll put a copy of the letter in there.
Okay. So, we, we can print it without the fire EMS and without the state police. We have to have the highway agent report, which you got.
I'm sure they'll
He's really, usually
And the state police, I'm sure they've done it, they just haven't thought to send it out.
So, it's close. Thank you. Good work. I know it's not easy. Remember, we pulled some teeth to get the things in, Carol, past years, for the annual report? Wasn't easy.
It's amazing, boy, Ed.
Put it.
Oh, my God. I don't have any non-public.
I got two.
Okay.
What's the R S A for?
Ninety-one A.
Yeah. Ninety-one A.
It does, which sections of it?
Legal.
Like the legal advice.
There's different
There is?
Different parts of law. Probably.
So, we've got consideration of legal advice provided by legal counsel. We've got consideration of negotiation and a plan for litigation.
Not sure. One's just a question of whether they're doing it non-public or public. The other one is just for you.
So, you made a motion?
Yeah. Second. All the paper. Aye. Bye.